Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025 regular monthly board meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of the children we serve and the community. We ask these things in your name.
Amen.
Ms. White, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Vouchet.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Griesen.
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Wong.
Here.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Rodney, who's not with us, Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Thank you. Agenda item number 2.1 is a communications update, SuperNews, and welcome, Ms. Velt.
All right, so in front of you, I have your communications packet for the month of April. As always, inside of that packet, you will find press releases and social media posts that have gotten high engagements in the last month, as well as some stats from our website and how many visits that we're getting per month there. We've gotten a lot recently because we've got pre-K registration and STEAM camp registration happening online, so there's a lot of interaction. Also, at the end of the packet, you'll see all of the stuff that we'll be covering on this month's edition of SuperNews, and you'll be hearing from Shawmet Elementary and Raleigh Alternative School. So without further ado, please enjoy SuperNews.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for SuperNews.
Hello and welcome to SuperNews.
The show that highlights some of the good things that happened in our district. And we'll begin our show with one of our big events of the year, our annual celebrating our school-community banquet, which honors outstanding achievement and commitment in public education.
Students of the Year, Teachers of the Year, Support Personnel of the Year, Volunteers of the Year, and Parents of the Year were all recognized for their incredible contributions to the district and community. Retirees, like my lovely co-host, were also recognized for their decades of service.
And speaking of service, three outstanding and longtime educators were also honored at the banquet for their 50 years in education. Congratulations to Mike Scallan, Debbie Goday, and Millie Soro on this incredible milestone.
A tree will be planted in their honor, which ties in nicely with our theme for next year that was announced at the end of the banquet, "Strong Roots and Bright Futures."
Bright Futures were also at the forefront of the recent Breakfast of Champions, when nearly 600 Shawmet High owls celebrated excellence of the classroom, leadership on campus, and citizenship in the community. Good food, prizes, and time with friends were all part of this special event.
A special guest was also on hand for a very special event, aptly named Guest of the Nation. America's favorite fighting Frenchman, Lafayette, was the featured performer in this traveling educational program making its way across the United States to commemorate the bicentennial of Lafayette's return to America. The show's most recent stop was the Shawmet Cultural Arts Theater, where 300 of our high school seniors and all eighth graders from our middle schools were in attendance to see history come to life.
While the goal of this traveling production is to educate the public about the roles played by both Lafayette and France in our War for Independence, the program in St. Bernard also took the event even further by including Shawmet High students in the show itself. Four of our alumni portrayed the orders who welcomed the marquee upon his arrival to the Shawmet Battlefield in 1825. Congratulations to all who are part of the day's events.
A trio of special educators were also honored recently when our district Teacher of the Year, Caroline Miller, was named as a Louisiana State Teacher of the Year semifinalist, while the American Petroleum Institute Delta Chapter honored Christina McCarter from St. Bernard Middle School as a 2025 Distinguished Teacher and Monica Hens of Shawmet High as the recipient of the 2025 Chairman's Award.
And while these current teachers were getting kudos, so was a future one when Ms. Quinn Fan has been nominated by her UNO Teacher Education Program Professors to receive the Louisiana Board of Regents Future Educator Honorable Award. Special thanks to second-grade mentor teacher Catherine Randle for her guidance and inspiration.
Mentoring was also at the heart of another recent event, when the St. Bernard Chamber of Commerce hosted its Women's Professional Network Breakfast, where female professionals from a wide array of careers and business backgrounds met with female students from Shawmet High to discuss the girls' plans for the future. Mentors answered specific questions about their own careers, listening to each girl's goals for success, and imparting practical and encouraging advice on how to achieve them. It was a good event with a great purpose.
Others sharing their expertise with those involved in the most recent Leadership St. Bernard Session hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. This month's class, held at Nunez Community College's Flex Space, focused on education in St. Bernard and some of the social services available to families in the parish. Our own superintendent, Ms. Vouchet, and Dr. Lemoine were on hand to facilitate the class, offering insight to some of the challenges of public education and higher ed.
Now, let's head over to Shawmet Elementary School to meet its news team there.
Hello, I'm Avery.
And I'm Egypt. And welcome to our Schools and SuperNews segment. Well, get started with our Accelerated Readers Ceremony, where we celebrate our top AR readers each nine weeks with the top class at each grade level receiving a class treat.
This nine weeks, the top readers, along with our teachers, are still stringing our Assistant Principal, Ms. Lancaster. Earlier in the year, winners got to slime and also pie Ms. McNabb. We can't wait to see what the last nine weeks will bring.
It's all part of celebrating our reading success, as this year, our students have already earned 252% more AR points than all of last year. This year's overall winners will be treated to a field trip to Barnes &amp; Noble for storytime and lunch.
And now, we'll go from a field trip to Field Day, as we see some of the action that was part of our Vikings do Disney, the happiest place on Earth. Each class showed a Disney movie to dress up as students and teachers participated in Disney's In the Games.
Including Wreck-It Ralph, Cone Flipping Relay, Car Scooter Relay, Royal Races Glass Slipper Relay, Peter Pan vs. Captain Hook: Tug of War, and Limbo, Lilo and Stitch Hawaiian Rollercoaster Relay, Upwater Balloons Toss, and Ratatouille Freezies. It was a fun day for all of us.
Ms. Morales's class has also been expanding her students' learning outside of the classroom, as seen by its Munchy Monday card. Here, our students go around the school selling drinks and snacks to the faculty and staff. The students not only learn social skills, interacting with customers, but are also provided opportunities to work on money-handling skills.
Ms. Morales's class also performed a play in front of all of our Vikings so that they could explore different characters and situations through drama. The show, The Three Little Wolves and the Big Bad Pig, was a howling success.
I tell you, that pig was some smart. But you know who was the smartest pig of all time?
Who?
Albert Einzwein, get it?
I get it.
Anyway, other Vikings missed a self-class, also had an amazing opportunity this year, working with playwright. The students were able to get their creative juices flowing by acting out skits and even creating their own plays and getting one of them published.
Special congratulations to Parker Kaspar and Asha LaBenta on writing the winning pieces from Shawmet Elementary. The whole class really came out as winners, too. Through the Goat in the Road program, fun was had, confidence was built, and stars were born during this special time. We definitely can't wait until next year.
Well, that's it for us here. See you next time. Bye.
Nice job, Vikings.
And a nice job to the cast and crew of Kiss Me Kate, who brought this romantic comedic musical to life.
Kiss me, Kate, kiss me, 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 Kate, kiss me, Kate, kiss.
Other talented performers on the stage at the Shawmet Cultural Arts Center were those who took part in the Shawmet High Talented Music Concert. Congratulations to all of these talented and dedicated performers.
Other players were also brought to life on stage. Arby Elementary brought all of the music and magic from the classic tale of Aladdin and the Magic Genie.
We never had a friend like me.
While Chris Mittel performed the youth version of Anastasia, a 60-minute adaptation specifically tailored for young actors of this spectacular Broadway musical about discovering who you are and defining who you are meant to be.
Student writing and drama was also the focus, when nine of our fifth-grade students had their original works performed by professional actors as part of the annual Goat in the Road Playwright Showcase. This event is the culminating activity for a year-long program where students work with professionals in learning how to bring writing from the page to the stage.
You shall have a tool.
Didn't I just say that? And why do they have sticks?
How does this matter if it doesn't involve sticks?
Prosternous, this is the only tool that you can use for this tool. Seriously, this is the only thing you can find, that is, the goat is enough.
I think we should just go with it.
Shhh.
Matt, it's time to go home.
You too, Ray. Time to go home.
Well, next time?
Yeah, next time.
And now, let's meet the news team over at Raleigh.
Here at Raleigh, all middle school students have the stretchy privilege of participating in relaxing yoga classes. With soothing music and lights out, students challenge their flexibility skills weekly. Not only does yoga relax their bodies, but also their thinking brains. After doing a variety of stretches and positions, students engage in a calming break where everyone relaxes and is completely silent. After an engaging yoga session and much-needed break, students are fired up and ready to rocket-launch back into class.
Hey, Edith, you know, some days, I feel like I'm really good at yoga, but sometimes, I just feel like I'm a poser.
Anyways, one of our in-favorite and sensitive here at Raleigh happens to be the Rocket Bucks store. Yes, we actually have a mini-store, but no cash is accepted. Rocket bucks only. Rocket bucks are earned by students for doing phenomenal things within our school, such as scoring exceptionally well on unit tests, great class participation, or helping a teacher. Once the rocket bucks are earned, students may spend them freely within the store.
Speaking of rocket bucks, another engaging opportunity here at Raleigh involves a shadow, but it isn't a groundhog. Students have an amazing opportunity to actually shadow a teacher for a day. This shadow, in fact, comes with a price tag for a total of 100 rocket bucks. Students get to help a teacher of their choice for a day. This gives students the opportunity to walk in our teacher's shoes.
Speaking of shoes, I wonder if all art teachers wear Skechers?
One of the most engaging activities that students enjoy most here at Raleigh is our Conflict Resolution Group. The goal of this group is to show students how to remove themselves from certain situations. Here, the effects of your actions are discussed and the snowball effect is explained. Students cite weekly affirmations in groups to aim to resolve all conflicts.
Here at Raleigh, yoga isn't the only common sensation. Actually, all the student senses may be used when occupying our new sensory rooms. These newly updated rooms are where students retreat to when a reset is needed. If a student is having a crisis, our sensor room doors are always open. There are a variety of hands-on sensory gadgets, including a sandpit, crazy mirrors, stress balls, and much more.
Thanks for joining us to learn more about Raleigh. Now, back to the studio.
Bye.
Nice job, Rockets. Oh, and speaking of Rockets, applications are now available for students to take part in this summer STEAM camp. Hosted at the MoMA Center through the month of June, campus will spend each day exploring, creating, learning, and marveling at the wonders of science and art with their peers, including trips to the planetarium. Space, haha, is limited. Visit our website or call the school board office to register.
Preschool registration is also open for all children who will be turning four by September 30th. The St. Bernard Parish Early Childhood Program provides a complete educational experience directed toward the development of cognitive, social, emotional, physical, and communication skills in a manner and at a pace consistent with the needs and capabilities of the individual child. Visit either the preschool office at Joe Davies Elementary, our district website, or the school board office to get your application.
And as we wind down our program today, we'd like to give a shout-out to our wrestlers from Shawmet High School, especially Janelle Rotunda, who was named as the Female Metro Wrestler of the Year and was also a state champion, while Coach Chris McNamara was named as the Metro Coach of the Year for girls wrestling. Other grapplers also excelled this season. Congratulations to all of our coaches and wrestlers, your hard work really paid off.
And finally, we conclude today's episode with the Shawmet High Pro Start Team that once again has soared to victory. A force to be reckoned with at the Louisiana Pro Start Invitational, our talented students showcased their culinary and business skills, bringing home major wins. They'll compete in Nationals later this spring.
Congratulations to them, and thanks to you for joining us. That's it for now, see you next month for my very last SuperNews.
Where we always let
The SuperNews roll.
Bye, guys.
great programs and accomplishments for our students.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Velt? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number 2.2 is the Leap Connect Nunez Dual Enrollment. And I believe we have Mr. Joe Sippalone here with us this evening to present. Good evening, Mr. Sippalone.
Good evening. How's everyone doing? All right, super excited to be here with you all today. I'm gonna try not to talk too fast, because when I'm excited, I talk fast, so I'm gonna try to go slow and definitely ask me any questions at the end. So we're super excited to talk tonight through the St. Bernard-Nunez Leap Connect Dual Enrollment Program. First, I wanted to take a minute and talk about the why, why this program is so important and why we're so excited for it. You know, for all our students, our goal as educators is we strive to help our kids get the skills, the experience, and the tools so that they can succeed after high school, right? For our Leap Connect students, the need is even greater. Looking at 2024 workforce statistics, 19% of adults that have disabilities that match those that are in our Leap Connect classrooms, 19% of those adults are working in some capacity, and only 3% have taken any college courses at all. So that means 81% of adults that have disabilities that we find in our Leap Connect classrooms, 81%, are not working at all. They're primarily home, and I think that, you know, this struggle, this phenomenon, is known well by many of our families. It's called the "school-to-couch" pipeline, and that, this pipeline is what we're trying to disrupt with this program. We don't want our students home after high school. We don't want them, we want every single student after high school to have somewhere to go, something to do, and someone to be, because they deserve it and because they have so much to offer. So that's the why. The what is, so on your first page, it kind of gives a outline of the program, but it's basically a three-semester dual enrollment program at Nunez Community College and their wonderful partners. Our first main pathway is going to be the, starting this, starting in August, is going to be the Environmental Services Specialist Pathway with a, with, with, I'm forgetting the word.
Concentration.
With concentrations, thank you, guys. With concentrations in hospitality, culinary, and the medical fields. Students will take two courses, two classes a semester at Nunez Community College. One will be a lecture and one will be a lab. The labs are already mostly built or are being built. Your second page has some pictures, we toured the facilities. I was really impressed with how big and vast all the facilities are at Nunez, but for our students and for this program, they're gonna have labs that replicate hotel rooms, hospital beds and hospital rooms, full-service kitchens, cafeterias, obviously classrooms, office spaces. So our kids are gonna get to learn in the classroom, that's gonna be the lecture, the college class, and then they're also going to have a lab at Nunez where they can put these skills and practices and techniques into practice, hone their skills, do that hands-on learning, and that's gonna set them up really well, too, throughout this program, earn industry-based credentials. Credentials that we're gonna work to get, you know, endorsed by the Workforce Commission, but these credentials will say, and there's gonna be a whole bundle of them in all these different concentrations, but it's gonna say that our students have the skills and the knowledge to be able to do the job at hand. While we're doing this, you know, there's gonna be room for, and there's gonna be opportunities for, obviously, onsite job training and internships, and so we're gonna start now reaching out to the community and to businesses. So that's kind of your third and fourth page in your packet, but we're gonna be looking for our business leaders and our community leaders, because our students have a ton to offer, and they're gonna be highly qualified and credentialed at the end of this program. So we're gonna be looking for them for letters of support for this program, we're gonna share what the program is, we're gonna ask for letters of support, and we're gonna ask them to look at our students very closely when they're, to hire them, when they're done with this program, because we feel like they have a lot to offer. All in all, you know, we believe this program is gonna be a big step in helping all of our students be as independent as possible to meet their goals and their families' goals. There's a huge interest for this. We've started to reach out to the families and the students who qualify or who would be ready to do this in August, and so far, 100% of the families and kids said they want to do this. So, you know, we just think this is gonna be really great for the kids, for the families, and for the community at large.
Thank you so much for this presentation. I know you gave us a tease at the last meeting and kind of teed this up, and it's great to hear, most importantly, the why, you know, and what we want to achieve, you know, as a school system to create opportunities for our students in collaboration with our community partners. So thank you so much for the presentation. Ms. Isart?
Thank you so much. We all appreciate the hard work that you've put into this program, and we all know that there's such a need for it, for our students with disabilities to earn credentials and to be successful after they leave our school system. I was just wondering, how many, how much feedback have you gotten from the community as far as the businesses to come in and say, yes, we want to participate in this?
I think that we have something planned in May where we're gonna be inviting some business leaders in to show them and share with them what this program is and what our students are gonna have at the end of it. So we're in the beginning stages of this. I will say, you know, we have a huge, huge outpouring of support and time and money when it comes to our Special Olympics, because I think they know that the kids are the best of us, right? The kids have so much, they're positive, they're energetic, they're collaborative, they have amazing sportsmanship, they're reliable, they're trustworthy, they work well on a team, and I'm generalizing a bit, everyone is different, but I think there's a value in our students, and so we're gonna be asking the businesses to support our students all the time, and also that we can, and our students are gonna be able to support them, their businesses, their work, their thing, it's gonna be better for our students being a part of it.
Great, well, thank you so much. I'm really excited about this program myself, and, you know, I'll look forward to much success with it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Isart. Ms. Harris?
How many students do we imagine each semester will have the opportunity to participate?
So for August, there are about 11 students that are the age, and then, so basically, the one thing I didn't say is, you know, our goal will be for ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, for the students to earn their Leap Connect Jump Start coursework. So they're gonna take all their content area classes, their electives, and also practice and get more confident in the skills needed to go succeed on a college campus, right? And then college is gonna help them succeed in the workplace. So there's about, depending on the year, 40 to 50 Leap Connect students in the school, so 10 to 15 to 20 per year.
I think that's excellent, and when they are participating in the Nunez courses, will we be sending over para-professionals to support them in those classes?
Yeah, I think it depends on the needs of the kids. We obviously, in our classrooms, we wanna be as inclusive as possible, as safe as to do, as is safe, as inclusive, we wanna be as inclusive as it's safe to do, so you guys get what I'm saying. Same thing here, we wanna be as least restrictive as possible, but also tailoring to the individual needs of the kids. So if there's a group of kids that would benefit from a para, one kid that would be able to access this program with a para, I think we have plans to be able to do that with our staff at Shawmet High, and then also give our Shawmet High staff the experience and the tools and the training to help them support some of this work in the classroom so that kids are ready to go and do this dual enrollment program at Nunez.
And one other piece of that, so when we think about bringing businesses in to ensure that there would be internship opportunities, how are we going to, as a school district, provide onsite internship opportunities within our own spaces for these students to implement some of these skills, either in our cafeterias, or office buildings, or classrooms, to where they can kind of be in-house and doing some of those things?
Yeah, I think there's, there's a lot of in-house opportunities. We had our students, we did lesson plans and modeling, and then practiced with them in the classroom so that they were prepared to go to MoMA's and prep for the Nutcracker Tea Event. So things like that, where we find an event or find a goal, and then we teach the kids the skills, and then they go get to practice those skills in environment. So I think we want to have in-house opportunities like that, also within our cafeteria and stuff, and there's kitchens in the schools, and, you know, most of our classrooms also have like built-in rooms either nearby or in the room that have like kitchens and things like that to learn life skills and social skills. We also want opportunities outside of our school, too.
Of course.
Both, yeah.
Both.
100%.
Thank you.
Ms. Griesen?
Can we talk a little bit about the cost of the program and how it's gonna be funded? Is this cost going to be paid for by the parents, by the school system? And for either one of those, if it's the school system, then are we able to fund that? That might be a Ms. Vouchet question.
Yeah. I can answer my question.
Let me try to put some of this in maybe somewhat of a broader context. By state and federal law, you know, students who participate in Leap Connect are not pursuing the regular high school diploma, and they are entitled to have the services in our school system until they reach the age of 22. So many times, that was sometimes a five, six-year program within a regular high school. Years ago, I guess we wanna say prior to Katrina, you know, go way back, we had pretty much a robust program in-house, where we had many kids who met this criteria, that we did our own in-house job creation and preparation program. It sort of paralleled what we used to call the old DE and COE programs, where kids would work half a day and come to school half a day. Well, with these kids, we did solicit positions for them throughout the community, we sent job coaches with them, and we had a really, really good program. With the change in educational priority and thought over these past years, many of those programs fell by the wayside. And then we got in heavily into dual enrollment. Well, the genesis of that was many years ago, but then we heavily got more and more and more into that. But we didn't have these opportunities for these students, because none of the colleges and universities wanted to have programs for kids who met this particular criteria. They didn't pursue a regular high school diploma, and they were more into a skills-based program. So what we did is try to work with Nunez through the CTE program to say, okay, let's put something together that would have both components, so that these students so that these students could have an experience on a college campus and on the regular campus as well. And so these kids, as you can see, primarily 18 and older, taking the dual enrollment classes and getting the IVCs, that would be their readiness time, pretty much. So as Mr. Sippelone said, they would spend their first, pretty much their first three years on the Shellman High campus, working through this, what we're trying to make a jumpstart pathway recognized by the state. Now, regardless of whether the state's going to recognize this immediately, we're doing it. You know, and we're going to show success and how it can be done. So we're putting it together that they would take what would be the normal jumpstart pathway in the courses that are modified for their ability levels and their interests, working toward participating in this capstone project, which is going to be the dual enrollment, the skills-based. And then we need the partnership of the people in the community. Because this is really for naught if they're not going to be able to have any kind of employment. So we have to sell the program to our business people, to our community, and to everybody, really, that this is something that is desperately necessary for many of the young people within our community. And because they do have, they are of value, they have skills, and they can do well with the proper accommodation and support. So we are going to host a luncheon in May, and we are inviting the business people within the community. And we're going to try to, at that point, make that the jumpstart for more involvement with our legislators and our state people to recognize this pathway and these particular credentials. And that's why it's very important that we tie it to some type of an industry-based credential. Not a single one, but a bundling of the ones that would be necessary for what they could achieve. Where they can work, you know, they could work in a hotel or motel situation. They can work in a hospital. They can work in a building. They would have the skills to do this once they exit the program and once they've had this training. So that luncheon is going to be, we're going to sell, sell, sell the program as not only a benefit for the kids participating in it, but really for a quality-of-life benefit within the community in which we all live and work. So that's the exciting part. When we get to the state level to get all of this approved, that's going to be the tough part, because we have to go through so many layers of bureaucracy, including, you know, the Workforce Investment Commission, the council that approves the IVCs, the industry-based credentials, to be accurate. We're fortunate, Millie is on the Accountability Commission. So we want her to be a point person in pushing this very hard in that Accountability Commission as a recognized pathway that will earn the school points, positive points, in the Accountability Program. Because to be perfectly honest, these kids, and I hate to say it this way, are counted as, what, zeros, right, Millie? Zeros in the Accountability Program. Now, how awful is that? So all the work that the school is doing, that the teachers are doing, we need to, we need to show people that the programs have values, these kids have value, and that we all have value. And that has to be two-pronged. We want to make them successful, but we want the public to recognize that this is a valuable resource and something that should happen and be good for kids. So that's going to be the purpose of getting this community of people involved. We need to make it a little bit smaller in the beginning to get people who have really been showing interest in this area together to form the basis for it and then work outward from there. And then we're going to be asking everybody around this horseshoe, as well as our local legislators, to begin to put pressure where they can, you know, at the state level, with the WIC, with the Workforce Investment Commission, with the state, and with all of us. So we are very excited about this. But regardless of whether they recognize it immediately, because all this stuff seems to take forever to get through the channels, we're going to implement starting this August. So we have it set up with Nunez, who's been a great partner with this. As you can see, the cost, $570 for three, it's the same as what we're having to pay for our regular education courses for dual enrollment. So the actual three-hour credit course, as you can see in here, is going to be $570 for one course. The lab situation, $204 per kid. So it's not going to be an insignificant cost. Now, there's money available with the Louisiana Rehabilitative Services, because they're partnering with this as well and looking at paying some of the tuition costs and such. And then we'll braid whatever funds we have. We have supplemental course allocations from the state that we use for dual enrollment. It's not going to be enough for everybody, y'all. I mean, let's just face it. The money has continued to be cut back from the state and the federal government. But these courses are so important, and these kids deserve as much of a chance to share in that pot of money as any other child that we educate in our schools. So we've just got to make it happen. And I know we have very generous people and businesses within the community who are ready to support this. Look at the support we have for our Special Olympics. I know that the same businesses are going to, once they hear about it and see what a good program it's going to be and will be, I think we're going to get the support. So we're ready to go, but we will start it in August. We will fund it in August for those kids who are at that point ineligible. And then we'll play catch-up with all the approvals and recognitions we need from these different agencies. But we will make it happen. We've done much more difficult things in our careers here. So we will make this happen.
Thank you, Ms. Voege. Once again, St. Bernard is paving the way for a wonderful, new, innovative program. Any other questions for Mr. Sippelone or Ms. Voege?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you again. We're very excited to see how we can support this. Okay. Agenda item number 3.1 is the approval to incorporate the report of the General Committee meeting minutes of April 8, 2025, into the minutes of the April 22, 2025 regular monthly meeting.
I'll sub move.
We have a motion by Ms. Daisart, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay. Agenda item number 3.2 is the approval of regular monthly meeting minutes of March 25, 2025, as published on April 18, 2025. We have a motion by Ms. Lee Bowman, seconded by Ms. White. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Agenda item number 4.1 are personnel changes for April 2025. And we have Ms. Natalie Albers here with us this evening. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. In your folders, you'll find the personnel changes from the last board meeting.
Okay, Ms. Albers, we can see that you have been very busy hiring and staffing for next year with all these new hires.
Transfer day is complete, so we have a lot of moves and people that reapplied for their positions. They came in temporary, maybe after the job they were last staff in season. And so now they've reapplied and they are permanent on, at their positions now.
And I see we do have some retirements, some new retirements on page three. So I will toss it to Ms. Daisart, if you'd like.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. Well, I think we had mentioned already Jill Gayot.
Gayot.
Gayot from Gochet Elementary. And we wished her, already wished her a happy retirement and thank you again for your years of service. And we also have Candace Hunt, Andrea Osteen, Megan Scallan, Mitzi Vega, Scott St. Pierre. I'm sorry. Oh, those are the resignations. I'm so sorry. Okay. Richard Reagan, and we mentioned him, I know, at the, at the committee meeting. And he's been a longtime employee, and we thank him very much for his service and time with us. We also knew, on the new list of retirements, is Christina Bloom. I know she's been with us many, many years. I went to school with her. And she, I know she started very young, and she was with us again for many years. So thank you, Christina, and happy retirement to you. And also Lisa Collins, thank you for your many years of service and happy retirement also to you. Thank you, Ms. Lemoine.
Thank you, Ms. Daisart. And thank you, Ms. Albers. We appreciate your report. Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number 5.1 is the approval of the administration's request for permission to mail letters of assurance, and this was a recommendation by the committee.
Sub move.
We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Daisart, seconded by Ms. Kreisen. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Agenda item number 5.2 is the approval of bid tabulation for bread and bread products for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. There was a recommendation by the committee. We have Mr. Morrell here this evening as well.
I'll move to approve it.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Long, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Agenda item number 5.3 is the approval of bid tabulation for milk and milk products for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. There was a recommendation by the committee. And we have a motion by Ms. White, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Again, we have Mr. Morrell. If there's any questions or comments, seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
Agenda item number 5.4 is the approval of bid tabulation for food products for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. And there was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Kreisen, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
Agenda item 5.5 is the approval of solicitations of quotes for fresh fruits and vegetables produce for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. And there was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you for being with us, Mr. Morrell.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. Agenda item number 5.6 is the approval of the 2024-2025 Revised Fund and Special Revenue Funds Budget. There was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Kreisen. We have Mr. Fernandez with us this evening. If there are any questions or comments? Okay, we have a question by Ms. Harris.
I do have a question. I'm not sure if it's in this budget. It's just a curiosity question. So we had our auction. How did we do with our auction?
We will be coming to the board next month with the results of the auction. It just closed out recently, so we're gathering that information, and we'll be coming next month with those results.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Fernandez? Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. If there are no further questions, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Okay. The agenda item number 5.7 is the adoption of the revision of School Board Policy JDD. There was a recommendation by the committee, and we have Mr. Morales here this evening with us. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Long, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any questions or comments for Mr. Morales? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
The agenda item number 5.8 is the adoption of the revision of School Board Policy JDE. And there was a recommendation by the committee. A motion by Ms. Daisart, seconded by Ms. Kreisen. Any questions or comments for Mr. Morales? And again, we did discuss this at the committee meeting.
I have a question.
Okay, Ms. Rodney?
I know our last meeting, when Ms. Lichardi presented it, we spoke about the backless shoes, the Uggs, I believe they're called. Can we look at actually putting in there, like, mules or, you know, front coat, shoe, shoes with backless? Because Uggs is a name brand, and that's a loophole. You can't come up, I don't have on Uggs. I have on the Skechers brand. And then we got, we're going to get into a tug-of-war behind the brand name. So if we could just, like, name the shoe, I think the name of the shoe is like a mule shoe. And that way, and we could always put parentheses, like Uggs. That way, we won't, our administrators at the schools won't have a tug-of-war with a kid saying it's not a name brand. That's the only thing I'm wanting to make a comment on.
So I think that's actually next on the agenda, just to put that out there. That, like, she was, I think Ms. Lichardi was going to come up to speak about that.
Oh, got it.
So I'm just, I just don't want to get confused on it. That's going to be Ms. Lichardi, and she's going to come up next. But I see her taking notes.
Got it. So just to clarify, that's not a part of JDE?
No, ma'am.
Okay, got it. So we've got a motion on the floor in a second. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Morales? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay. Agenda item number 5.9 is the approval of the revision of the Guide to Student Conduct. And there was a recommendation by the committee.
I'll sub move that we, that we accept the revision of Guide to Student Conduct?
Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Daisart, seconded by Ms. Kreisen. Any questions or comments for Ms. Lichardi? Ms. Rodney?
Now I'm on topic. But like I was saying before, let's look at, like, putting the actual type of shoe instead of the brand name of shoes so our administrators won't get into a tug-of-war with a kid saying, well, I don't have Uggs, I have Skechers on. So, you know, being very definitive, that way, when infraction happens, there's no loopholes for it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
It does already say backless or low-back shoes, you know, so it includes Uggs, but it also specifies the type of shoe.
Well, let's just pull the word Uggs out. That way, it's just backless shoes.
Right. We can put that in there.
To pull Uggs out?
Okay.
You know, add in mules.
Okay. So do we want to revise the motion to include that change?
To add mules.
To add mules and remove the word Uggs? Okay.
Well, you can put it in parentheses, which is fine.
For example.
Right.
I accept that.
All right. So we have a motion, an amended motion by Ms. Daisart.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Rodney. Any further questions or comments for Ms. Lichardi? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number 6.1 are items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. Of course, we've got time before the next meeting to do that. Okay. Agenda item number seven, superintendent's notes.
It's just in your packet. We've got the General Fund Actual Report and the Workers' Comp Fund Statements for your review in there. And just knowing that we're in the season now for all of the end-of-the-year activities. Shellman High School had their senior awards night last Wednesday night. It was very, very, very nice. We had 50 kids, 70 kids, who received scholarships from Mero, the Mero Foundation, at $4,000 each, which is a significant investment that they have made in our youth and the recognition of many of the community organizations in giving the scholarships. Dr. Lemoine was there to present the school board scholarship to one young man. So they most appreciated the school board members funding that particular scholarship as well. Our graduate, high school graduation is May 8, which is coming very, very, very soon. We have the Reading Association banquet, I know, on the 15th. On the 16th of May, we have two of our students of the year at the, one at the middle school level, Rami Dali, and at the high school level, Trey Myers, who have made state finalists, one of each, one of eight state finalists for the statewide student of the year. And those announcements are going to be made on May 16 at the Cook Center. So many of us will be there to see that. So I know the kids are excited about it. The last day of school for The last day of school for students is May 22nd, and then we have records day on that Friday, May 23rd, for all of our employees. So, and in between all that, we have eighth grade graduations, fifth grade exit ceremonies, kindergarten exit ceremonies. So, if you, anybody's interested out there, you can have something every day and every evening to attend with all of the celebrations that we have at the end of the school year.
Thank you, Ms. Bojek. And we know, again, like you said, it's a very busy end of the year and we wanna thank all of the teachers, staff members, administrators for helping to work all of these events and put these nice things on. So, thanks to all of our staff. And now, is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you and good night.